It is now seven o'clock. At this time, we have skipped over public participation, there is none, and go to staff report with Dr. Porter.
Thank you, President Barti. Well, we have a lot to discuss this evening, a lot of great things that's happening in the district. This is the 11th week of school, we're in the 11th week tomorrow. And we cross our fingers, things have been going well. So, parents seem to come talk to us and not at us. Our students are doing well, and our staff is working extremely hard. Obviously, and of course, there's, there are going to be challenges. Nothing is perfect, nothing is perfect, but we are moving forward. So, we are happy about that. There are a lot of firsts that have happened in our district, and we are really, really happy. Mrs. Lot, I'm going to ask her to go over some of the highlights that has happened since the last time we met.
Since we last met for the month of October, we had five awareness campaigns and 11 observances throughout the district. We have celebrated our principals' October's National Principal Month. We also celebrated Texas Education Human Resources Day. We just began posting principals in the spotlight. We have four that we posted today, and we will post four tomorrow and the remaining eight between Monday and Tuesday of next week to close out National Principals Month. And all of those videos were produced by the media team. Because we have closed out the first quarter, we are starting to recognize the first quarter honor roll and perfect attendance students. And the lists are submitted by campuses, and we have been sharing that on our social media platforms. We continue to celebrate a homecoming, and Abraham Lincoln Fine Arts Academy did a beautiful job on their homecoming this year. The Port Arthur News reported the fact that our CTE campus has a new pharmacy tech program. Our Wilson students are participating in GT Tame on Saturdays, and the Fitness Club also walks the seawall every Saturday morning. We have one of our Titan football players who is a VOE student at Wheatley. Here he is reading a story to some of our tiniest Titans. At the bottom in the middle, we have some of our students conducting science experiments. And several campuses throughout the school district have been celebrating their, their staff members. Some of them post teachers of the month. They celebrated custodian, National Custodian Day, so all of the campuses did recognize their custodians. In the top left corner, there is a career exploration class at the Abraham Lincoln Fine Arts Academy, and they have started to take field trips throughout the community to expose the students to different career opportunities. So, this particular picture, they visited Judge Guillory's courtroom, and the kids actually got to play the role of the attorneys and the judge and whoever the defendant and whoever the complainant was. And they had mock trials, mock jury. So, this gave them exposure to what it's like to work in the courtroom. More homecoming photos. Our Student Activities Director has started a new tradition where she is inviting former homecoming queens to come back every year to do a Queens Walk with, and help to crown the new and current homecoming queen. You all attended a TSA and TASB conference, and you made their social media website. So, that's where we got those pictures from. And our multilingual and migrant department hosted an art contest that was district-wide for Hispanic Heritage Month. All of our campuses celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month in a big way. Our high school art students created a mural of Selena on the wall. Last year, there was a different mural, and this year, the news covered, not just the television news, but the Port Arthur newspaper interviewed the students and photographed the students who worked on the mural. And they talked to the reporters about how the idea for that particular mural came to be. We are, this week, we kicked off Red Ribbon Week for 2023, and it will end on October 31st. So, all of our campuses are participating, not just in dress-up days, but educating our students on the dangers of drugs, alcohol, tobacco, vaping, and things of that nature. We are still celebrating breast cancer awareness. All of our campuses have been wearing pink, and even the administration building, everyone in the district has gone pink on Wednesdays, every Wednesday throughout the month of October. Last Friday was our Pink Out Football Game, and our band did a fundraiser where they were selling the breast cancer shirts as they do every year. So, you can see that design in the top-left corner. With our athletics, we had, one of our tennis players was named Athlete of the Week by the newspaper. We celebrated our Lady Titan volleyball team seniors on Tuesday, and that was a really nice turnout. So, we have some pictures from one of the tennis matches. And also softball season is, is getting ready to start. The girls have already started practicing, and basketball season is getting ready to start for boys and girls. So, they have been practicing as well. Our band continues to participate in Battle of the Band competitions and are continuing to represent the district well and coming home with lots of trophies. We have a new tradition that President Barti started by donating this football trophy that will be given each year to the winning eighth-grade football team. It will either be memorial, I'm sorry, Thomas Jefferson or Lincoln. This year, Lincoln won the trophy in the clash or battle of the Titans. And so, with this, we wanted to extend it not just to the eighth-grade football team, but also to volleyball. So, the office of the superintendent is donating the trophy for that, and that will go to Thomas Jefferson, so, because their girls won the battle for volleyball. And then, the Port Arthur News is donating trophies for the girls and boys soccer teams. So, when those games happen, where Lincoln and TJ face off, the winning campus will receive the trophy. And then, on next year, whoever wins, and in the future, every year, whichever team wins, that campus will host or house the trophy until the, the following season. We are in talks of getting donations for the girls and boys' basketball trophies. And the donor that we talked to also mentioned also giving good sportsmanship for a girl and a boy athlete at each of the campuses. We had three of our auxiliaries to host camps. We had over 130 young girls to attend the Flames Camp. We had over 200 young girls to attend the Cheerleaders Camp, and about 30 girls attended the volleyball camp. So, this was a very good way to engage the community. The parents have been absolutely thrilled, and the kids performed very well at the football games. And the volleyball kids, it was like forming big sister relationships with all three of the auxiliaries, with the little kids looking up to the big kids. And as far as alumni recognition, our own Frida Washington traveled out of the country and on, I think it was World Teacher Appreciation Day, she was actually in Africa. So, I thought that was a pretty big deal for her to be celebrating that particular education awareness day across the globe. One of our alumni has a song that's been nominated for a Grammy and another song that's also featured on the movie soundtrack. We have another alumni who is bringing his television series that he stars in, and he's also the executive producer. He will be premiering three episodes from the series in November at the Jefferson Theater in Beaumont, and his tickets are on sale on the Ticketmaster website. But we are also in talks with him to see if he can come and speak to one elementary, one middle school, and one high school campus when he's here the day before the premiere. And also, we have extended the invitation to campuses if they are able to sponsor and have groups from the campuses to go to the premiere. He said it's for ages 16 and up. Our instructional coach at Sam Houston was selected by TEA to participate in the Committee for the Teacher Pedagogy Education Standards. So, we are proud of her. And we also have an MHS alumni, Javen Jean-Louise, who will be receiving one of the MLK awards on Martin Luther King Day from the Martin Luther King Support Group of Southeast Texas. We are remembering one of our former employees, John Kyle, who, who recently transitioned, and he dedicated 28 years of his career here in Port Arthur ISD. Community engagement, our CTE campus, the Titan Salon, will host its grand opening on November 6th from 4:30 to 7:00. So, they are inviting the entire community to come out, and they will show you what it is that they can do, all of the services that they will be offering. And when they open to the public, this is not just for PISD employees or students, this is for the community. So, people can actually call and make appointments and actually go to be serviced on Monday and Tuesday evenings after November the 6th. We had some students groups to participate in the cultural, the cultural exhibition that the city of Port Arthur had at the Civic Center. The picture at the top in the middle is of the Thomas Jefferson Group. One of our students from the Early College was first runner-up in the Calvercay Pageant. The Queen Campus participated in the American Cancer Society Go Gold for Childhood Cancer and came in third place. And we are proud of the Queen because it wasn't just based on how much money you raised, it was based on how much money you raised per student. And the Queen only has third through fifth grade, so they really worked hard to come in third place, and they won $500 from the American Cancer Society. We also continue to promote activities that are going on within the community. We invited parents to participate in a virtual anti-vape conference that was held on this past Tuesday. Every Monday, the math supervisor for secondary sends math updates. So, we, when we get them, we post them on social media so their parents can know what's going on, as well as students. And the Port Arthur LNG awarded the Abraham Lincoln Fine Arts Academy a $35,000 grant through their Innovative Educators Initiative. Our new chief of police came to us with the idea of having students design the new police uniform, shield, or crest. So, he sent these, the instructions to the art students at the high school, and they submitted well over two dozen submissions. The, the top three who, who fit all of the criteria into the design were the ones that we released to the, on social media, and we asked the public to vote. So, they used the Google form. And the winning shield, which will be the new police shield for the school district police department, is the one in the top-left corner. It, it's really red, black, and silver, but you can't really see the silver too good. So, what looks white on the screen is actually like a light gray silver color. Our journalism students produce a weekly electronic newspaper, and we have been putting those pages on social media so that the public can see what the kids are working on. And this is our media summary and social media stats for, since we last met. We've had 38 newspaper articles, six television news story articles, one crisis communication. And our media team has started to produce weekly, the student of the week video. So, we don't just see like a picture of the kid and highlights about the kid. We actually hear from those who are camera-ready, from, from the children themselves. They tell their name, their school, their grade, their favorite subject, and what their future aspirations or career goals are. And our most popular Facebook post and video, the most popular video, was the volleyball team entrance at the Homecoming Pep Rally, which was the Globe Pep Rally. It reached over 18,000 people, it was viewed by over 8,000. And our most popular Facebook post was the Lincoln volleyball team, eighth-grade volleyball team came in third place at the middle school tournament. And then, our scoreboard, the Friday Night Lights scorecard from our football game this past Friday. And that concludes my report.
Yes. As you see, board members and audience, we have been working, and our kids are doing a lot of it. So, we are really, really proud of them. We're proud of our staff members, be, and I must say that students cannot move forward and do any of these things without the help of the employees within our district. It takes a lot of time, takes a lot of effort, and they have, they give up their time after hours. You know, a lot of our teachers and paraprofessionals, transportation, cafeteria workers, custodians, everyone work after. Our curriculum specialists, they have meetings after hours, principals, everyone is working there. And we just don't work 7:45 to 3:00. I mean, it goes on and on and on. So, we are proud of them. Next on the agenda, we have the annual bilingual ESL Program Evaluation Report that's done yearly, okay? Come in, so now I'll ask if Ms. Owen, Dr. Owens has anything that she'd like to say.
Yes, as you mentioned, we need Dr. Porter, Board of Trustees. Every year, we are required as a district to present to the Board of Trustees.
Hold up, get the, get the mic, Mr. Lee, maybe she have the mic.
I can speak louder.
Yeah.
So, good evening, everyone. Thank you for, for being here. And Board of Trustees, every year, we are required as a district to present to you, to the Board of Trustees, our yearly program, bilingual ESL program evaluation based on our findings, I guess, from the 20, the year, the previous year. So, now, it's my pleasure to introduce to you Mrs. Naomi Knowlton, the program supervisor, who will present to you our, our findings for our program evaluation for bilingual and ESL education. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, good evening, President Barti, Board of Trustees, Dr. Porter, and Executive Leadership Team. I have a distinct pleasure of presenting the bilingual ESL Program Evaluation for the 2022-2023 school year. And we're going to go ahead and start here. On the, on the board this morning, I mean, this, this evening, is the Multilingual Migrant Department Team. Next in the report is the Table of Contents. Just as a brief review, this is quite a lengthy report, but it includes all of the Texas Education Code and the Texas Administrative Code, as well as ESA requirements. The following will be, much of it will be reviewed very briefly. The mission and vision of the bilingual ESL programs. The executive, executive summary for the district. We have a brief Emergent Bilingual ESL English Learner Overview, bilingual ESL Program Overview, the bilingual allotment, and Title III Part A, as well as the bilingual ESL Support Services Overview. And then, the State Assessment Materials Academic Achievement Measured by STAR and Language Proficiency Tellpass Report, albeit that the information that we will be providing is still preliminary until it is finalized by the TEA, as well as the bilingual exceptions and ESL waivers for the 2022-2023 school year as a review, and then a brief summary of what will be submitted in the November 1st submission for this current school year. Included in the report is also a glossary of acronyms. As you know, there's probably lots and lots of acronyms as we go through here. This may not be an exhaustive list, but it is a summary of the acronyms that will be used. And then, next, just to quickly align, our mission and vision in the multilingual migrant department is very closely aligned to the mission of Port Arthur ISD. We are dedicated to providing emergent bilingual immigrant and migrant students and their families an opportunity to be academically successful. So, our goal is to produce students that are competent in the English language, and that is, of course, through the implementation of challenging curriculum, teaching strategies, of course, directed towards the academic, social, and emotional needs of students. We also believe these skills to be the cornerstone of shaping these students to become lifelong learners, and not just contributing members of a global society, but also of the Port Arthur community as well. So, again, the main piece here is that the Port Arthur Independent School District bilingual and ESL programs are designed to provide consistent and high-quality education for those culturally and linguistically diverse students in our district. And of course, the focal point of our vision and mission is to ensure that our district is aligned with Chapter 89 and the Commissioner's role in Subchapter BB. The executive summary kind of goes over the, the main points of the report. Port Arthur ISD currently offers the Transitional Bilingual, Early Exit Bilingual Program and two ESL programs, that's the ESL Content-Based and Pull-Out Program for emergent bilingual students enrolled in the district. These programs are intended to facilitate emergent bilinguals integration into the regular school-wide curriculum, and of course, to ensure equal educational opportunities for language minority students. The bilingual, pardon, the bilingual program is offered at Sam Houston, Lakeview, Terrell, Washington, and Wheatley for Spanish, the Spanish-language minority students in the district. It begins in pre-kindre, and of course, it is a carefully structured sequence of literacy skills in the native language, as well as gradual skill development in English through ESL methodology as well. So, of course, the native language functions to provide access to the curriculum while the student is acquiring, acquiring English. And of course, the biggest piece here is our district is promoting and encouraging biliteracy through the bilingual program offering. The ESL programs are also offered at every campus in our district and at all grade levels to any language minority student, not just those who are Spanish-speaking, who need to develop and enhance their English language skills. So, ESL programs provide intensive English instruction in all subjects, of course, with the focus on listening, speaking, reading, and writing through the use of ESL and sheltered instruction methodologies. So, the executive summary also, just to note that the state of Texas does require an annual evaluation of bilingual ESL programs in school districts like ours, where these bilingual ESL program services are offered. And so, the, the evaluation includes the following information. The academic progress of our emergent bilingual students, the levels of English proficiency among the emergent bilingual students in our district, the number of students that have been reclassified from emergent bilingual to English proficient, frequency and scope of professional development provided to teachers and staff serving emergent bilingual students, and finally, an accounting of the number of bilingual exceptions and ESL waivers that were granted for this past year, as well as the current number of bilingual ESL waivers that we will be filing on November 1st for the current school year. So, very, very briefly, if I can just make a quick note, some of these slides I will be moving through rather quickly. It is a report for your review, but if at any point, if I'm moving too quickly, please don't hesitate to stop me, and hopefully, I can answer any of your questions or address your concerns. The next piece of the report, per requirement, is our emergent bilingual ESL learner overview. And I put in there very, some fast facts, some tech, in order to kind of position our district with the state of Texas. The state of Texas is looking at 21% of emergent bilingual in Texas public schools. And Texas serves one in five of the nation's emergent bilingual students, and 10% of those are receiving special education services. And all of this will make more sense when we look at it compared to our district. In Texas, 88% of the languages represented are Spanish, 1.6% is Vietnamese, and the rest are other languages. I would like to just briefly go to our student demographics, which is the next slide. Here is included our ethnic distribution, and we can see here, this is as of the reporting from last year. We are 50.4%, Hispanic, 4.1% African-American, and then, 2.5% white, 2.2% African, I mean, American Indian, and 2.7% Asian. Our emergent bilingual distribution is, as compared to non-EB. Non-EB is 72.3% as of the PIM's reporting last year, and our emergent bilingual is 27.7%. So, just as, as a point of comparison there, our district is above the state average. The state average, remember, is 21% emergent bilingual. We're at 27.7, so our district does have a few than the, the state average. The other piece, the next piece here, it was actually one of our department goals for the, the last school year, was to enhance educational opportunities for emergent, I mean, not just emergent bilingual, but those emergent bilingual students who are newcomers and immigrant students. And again, there's the SS definition as to what an immigrant student is qualified as, and there's three parts to that definition. But the biggest piece there is our effort was to improve campus procedures for identification of immigrant students. It doesn't mean that we had an influx, although we do have, we did have a considerable amount of students coming into the district from countries outside of the United States, where students were not here for more than three full academic years. But what we attempted to do was properly code and identify those students so that hopefully, in, in an effort to hopefully receive more fun immigrant funding, to better serve those students. And so, in the year prior, that's 21-22, we had 146 immigrant students identified in the PIM snapshot. And as of last year's snapshot, we had 421. So, the efforts did not go unnoticed. We did definitely see a jump in our immigrant coding and our immigrant population as well. The next piece here is our home countries. That data is generated from our home language surveys, and again, as students enroll. Our native language reports, it's, as it's reported up there, we are 96% Spanish, which is above the state average. If you recall, the state average is 88%, we're at 96% Spanish, which is why we're a district required to offer Spanish bilingual programs. We have a 2.4% in our languages of Vietnamese, which is above the state average, which is 1.6%. And then, the others as they break down. So, I just wanted to make sure that you had this for your review to see where the majority of our immigrant students, our newcomer students, are coming from. The next couple of slides are basically going to be over emergent bilingual students served by, by programs district-wide for different numbers. I just want to clarify one point. ALP stands for the Alternative Language Placement, and that's important in terms of the bilingual exceptions that we file with the state. When we file an exception, we have to code those students as alternatively served. And so, that's why we see kind of an increase there in, when we're looking at the comparison between two years. And so, just, I'm going to go through these slides rather quickly, but just, again, if you have any questions, please, please don't hesitate to stop me. These are emergent bilinguals served by program district-wide. The next one is our emergent bilingual demographics for elementary, and that's our, our EB students compared to our non-EB by elementary campus. The next one is by secondary campuses. The next piece here in the report is the number and percentage of students reclassified, as it's required to report. Port Arthur ISD currently serves 2,652 as of yesterday. And so, those are active emergent bilingual students in bilingual and/or ESL programs. And we monitor another 491 students. And so, if you look at the right-hand side there, it will show you the number and percentage breakdown of students by year. We are required to monitor students for four years, two are state-required, that's first and second-year monitor, and third and fourth are federal monitoring years. And so, we just wanted to make sure that you had a review of that. The next slide, of course, is our emergent bilingual students served in other special programs. With regard to special education, we're right on par with the state, it's about 10%. We did have an increase last year in our dyslexia representation, and we attribute that to like strengthened efforts in the district to have early identification for, and support for those students as well. Okay? The next piece is our program overview. This one might be a little fast and furious. All it basically is going to do is it's going to kind of outline for you the program sites for the, our programs, both bilingual and ESL. And just as a point of review, the intention here, as it is aligned with the district mission, is to provide that consistent and high-quality education for our culturally and linguistically diverse students. These are our program sites at the elementary, as I listed in the executive summary. This is the instructional model for the Transitional Bilingual Early Exit. It gives a general description, and for sake of time, I will not read or review those, but they are there for your review. Certifications, the goal of the program, and of course, the instructional support, as well as the instructional model for the bilingual, the early, early exit transitional model. The next piece is a model, an illustration of the early exit model that we utilize in our district. And the next couple of slides are going to be our ESL program sites at the elementary, pre-K through fifth grade, and secondary- pre-K through 5th grade, and secondary program sites, 6th through 12th grade. Included also for your review is the instructional models of two. Remember, we offer two programs in our district, the ESL Content-Based Program, and that is the, this outlines the general descriptions, certifications, goal, and instructional support, as well as the ESL Pull-Out Program model, which is outlined there as well. The next piece of your report is the, basically the funding piece, the bilingual allotment in the Title III Part A, English Language Acquisition, as well as the bilingual ESL Support Services that were provided. In quick review, of course, the multilingual department strives to provide expert assistance and best practices in professional development to ensure the success of our emergent bilingual student population. Services that were provided were professional development and support for instructional needs of emergent bilingual students. Bilingual ESL certification preparation, second language acquisition methods, ESL proficiency, pardon, English Language Proficiency Standard Support, bilingual ESL immigrant and migrant services, parent-family community engagement, state and federal compliance from LPAC to PIMS reporting, state testing for STAR and TELPASS, state and federal accountability requirements, compliance, and RDA. In the next few slides, it is broken down in pieces. A lot of it, again, is just the compliance piece, the reports, for full transparency. The first piece is the review of Title III Part A and the bilingual allotment expenditures. There are two slides here which are from the TEA outlining the Title III funding guidelines and the TEA's BEA funding guidelines for your review. And then the next few are just the major expenditures, broke down by each expenditure of how the funding was spent to ensure the success of the emergent bilingual students and the teachers who serve those. A lot of it has to do a lot with supplies. They have instructional supplies, pardon, supplemental materials, and professional development for not just building capacity for teachers who serve emergent bilingual students, but also for teacher certification for those especially who are under the bilingual exception or ESL waiver. The next piece here, again, just running through those, the Title III Part A, English Language Acquisition, Language Enhancement and Academic Achievement Act. This is the review of the compliance report and expenditures. Included in here is the TEA's Title III Part A allowable use of funds, which is how our department aligns our fund, our spending to ensure that we are not stepping outside of the allowable use of funds for Title III. The next pieces are actually the compliance report submission that was submitted, not, I don't remember the date exactly, but it wasn't too, too long ago. And it breaks down each part. Part one being the Supplemental Language Instruction Educational Program and Activities Implemented, and you can see by category the focus area that was in the application and funding was allotted for. And then part two is the Supplemental Parent, pardon, Family and Community Engagement Activities and how the funding was allotted for the following. Parent outreach and trainings, family literacy service and outreach and trainings for that as well, and then of course, community participation programs. And again, all of that is there in addition to supplemental support provided. That leads into the Title III Part A, Parent-Family and Community Engagement. We have listed, it's not, again, not an exhaustive list, but the highlights of the Title III Part A activities that were provided throughout the 2022-2023 school year for parents for your review. It's, it's listed the title of the training, the, the date of the training, and then of course, all of the communication, the flyers that was sent to encourage parent attendance as well. Another one of the efforts, of course, is to, as we extend, we are a department that monitors bilingual ESL programs, but we will also want to ensure that our parents are gaining proficiency in English, to better support and partner with campuses in support of their students' educational experiences. So English classes are provided for parents and the community, as well as, and as you, as you recall from the compliance report, the family literacy piece. And so these are two pieces, one for elementary and one for secondary, with the emphasis on post-secondary readiness for our emergent bilingual immigrant and migrant students. And this just, this last piece here is our summer enrichment piece for our families, and there are some pictures that kind of demonstrate the, the summer piece for our parents. Additional services provided under this title are help with registration, translation of transcripts, report cards, assisting parents with school needs, transportation, special education, homebound, translation and interpretation at department meetings, sharing information with parents, et cetera, et cetera. The next one here, all informational videos that are created by members of our department and shared on YouTube to ensure that parents have access and, and on-demand access to training to help assist them as well. The next piece here is our bilingual ESL professional development. Again, this will go rather quickly, but it is, as they're listed, from July all the way through until probably July of the next year. So if you look here, these are all the professional staff development offerings that were provided to staff, teachers, and in the district, pardon. I'm going to go through those rather quickly for sake of time today, here. And then the next big piece, of course, is the compliance arm of our, of our department, which is, has to do with our Language Proficiency Assessment Committees. Included here is the board policy to ensure that those committees are not only in place, but they are trained appropriately to ensure that, that students are being processed in our district appropriately. We had, and I would just like to make a quick plug here, it's not in here, but we, in our submissions, we had nothing, no fatal errors come back. We remained 100% compliant, and so that is a good thing. So we are very, very happy, and from everything from our trainings to our submissions with the states, and so our LPAC procedures were, were highly effective. The next piece, of course, here, and I'm just going to say, I will review this, but all of the information with regard to student data and test scores is preliminary until finalized by the TEA, so I have it all here, but I don't even know. So how that'll turn out, but it is there. I just have to quickly review our state assessment materials and also our academic achievement for STAR and language proficiency. We have, for identification and progress monitoring, we use pre-loss and loss, and then academic readiness, language proficiency and reclassification, there's STAR, English and Spanish, TELPASS, and then we use Iowa assessments in grades where students do not take STAR. And so again, I have this on the, you know, up here for you to review, however, none of the results have been finalized. So at the time of this report, none of the data is, is final, is final. So it's kind of not a fair or accurate measure, but it is included there. Just very briefly, just in terms of how the data is structured, in red up there, the bilingual STAR, it's going to break it down by bilingual 3 through 8, STAR passing rate, and then it's going to go through and do ESL STAR passing rate as the RDA is set up. And so there is some indicators where, according to preliminary data, for the most part, we either maintained or showed progress. There were only a few areas that we had some decreases, but very minor, which is a good thing. We hope that this preliminary data does remain because it's, it looks very promising. Please note that with regard to the Alternative Language Placement, this was report-only last year, and so it's, it's an area that we're not sure with RDA if they're going to include it for this current school year. And then we also have to continue to monitor students after reclassification, as well as STAR EOC at our high school campuses. And that's, all of that data is there and available for you. The next piece that we're required, of course, is the TELPASS composite rating. This is one area that we will continue to have to monitor and do better. The TELPASS assessment is now moved to a completely online for most grade levels, and so it's just an area that is going to be one of the areas of growth that we need to focus on for this school year. Okay? And there is some, again, preliminary data available as well. We did see with regard to our graduation rate, we had really good increases, which means that, you know, we had more students graduating last year, which is really a wonderful thing. And then our annual dropout rate dropped from, was 4.3 to 1.7. So those are very good, promising numbers as well. And then, of course, the next piece is Dyslexia Representation. I've already mentioned that we did see an increase, slight, but an increase as well. And then what is included in the next portions of your slide is just it broken down by campus. So I'm going to move through that rather quickly. Again, Houston, Lakeview, Terrell, then the ESL DeQueen, Houston, Lakeview, Travis, Terrell, Port Acres, Adams, and then of course, Jefferson Middle, Lincoln Middle, and then this is again, by campus as well, again, for your, for your review. And at the very last piece for us is the review of our waivers for last year. Included in here are the certification requirements by program model for both bilingual and ESL, and then that, of course, the requirement that the school dis, if they're unable to employ a sufficient number of teachers, what are the assurances that have to be followed? So last year, we filed 18 bilingual exceptions, and here's the breakdown of those. They were filed for the following campuses at the following grade spans for the numbers, it lists the number of students, classrooms, and teachers. And same for ESL. And then here is a summary of the progress in those areas as well, for your review. Last year, we had 65 bilingual certified, I mean ESL certified, and 27 bilingual certified teachers, just as, and again, I'll get to that slide in just a second, but this current school year, we are going to have to apply for 21 bilingual exceptions and four ESL waivers, and these are the following campuses. And the last slide here for this evening is our numbers. If we look at our 2022, we had 27 bilingual certified teachers last year, and that's bilingual certified, 32 ESL. We had, this year, we, and I think it's in great compliments to the district and the support that we received through Esser Funding, we had ESL Certification Academy in the summertime, which we saw a huge jump from 65 to 96 ESL certified personnel in our district. And so I just want to say thank you on behalf of, of the department, and of course, just for that effort, we really saw a huge increase in our ESL certified teachers. And so our effort this year is to do something to get more bilingual certified educators in our district. And so that brings me to the close. We know that this has given us an opportunity to look at all of our different data points. We have developed department goals and guidelines to ensure that we are working towards making sure these students have equitable access to diverse learning environments and that we're doing our very best to serve these students. And so I just want to say thank you for your time, thank you for your attention. I know it was quite lengthy, but I do appreciate your support, and that's it for me.
Good. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have two of the most energetic, energetic GEAR Up. They look back there and they're saying, who, us? Yes. GEAR Up, gaining early awareness and readiness for undergraduate programs. As they come forth, I ask Dr. Owens to introduce the two ladies.
Yes, once again, thank you, Dr. Porterie and Board Trustees. It is my pleasure and honor to introduce you to these awesome program coordinators, Mrs. Brantlin, Morris, and Ms. Nadella Collins, and they're going to share with you what is unique here. I know that you've been seeing it in the community, what is it exactly, what is it that they're doing? So they're doing some great things in our community, in our schools, so I'm going to allow them to let you know what opportunities and experiences they're allowing our students to, to experience through this program.
All right. Good evening, good evening. To, like, I want to do like her, President Bority, Superintendent Mark Porterie, to our trustees, and also our executive team and other members that are here on today. So guys, I am Nadella Collins, and this is-
Brantlin Morris Jacobs.
And we are your GEAR Up coordinators for Abraham Lincoln Middle School and also Thomas Jefferson Middle School.
And I'm telling you, that's how they are. I don't know what they're taking.
I don't even know how to tone this down. I'm sorry.
Don't tone it down. When you're dealing with kids, you need to have that tone, so keep it going.
So like Dr. Mark Porterie said, GEAR Up stands for gaining early awareness and readiness for undergrad programs.
Um, so you may, I'm sorry, let me go ahead and click through here. All right, let's see. Well, yeah. All right, um, it's clicking. I hear it. Oh, there we go. I'm sorry. All right, so some of you guys, like Dr. Morales said, you may be asking, what is GEAR Up? And I have people that come to me all the time, what is GEAR Up? What are you guys doing? What are we doing for the community? GEAR Up is a college access program. It's like a gateway program that helps our students and our families plan for college awareness, plan for college, and also plan for our, their career paths after high school. GEAR Up is all about increasing opportunities and also the options that students have as they go out and think about the dreams or the career paths that they would like to take.
So GEAR Up is a federally funded program through Department of Education in cohort with the University of Texas at Austin. It's a seven-year cohort, so we started last school year, it began in January. The grant was awarded in September of last school year, but we all started in February. We got the sixth graders, seventh graders, and now they're current seventh graders and eighth graders. GEAR Up, our partnership is the R2, stands for Reset, Reimagine. The cohort is based in, we follow these students all the way from, like I said, sixth grade into their first year in college. It focuses exclusively on improving college readiness and success for low-income students and their families.
So like all programs, our programs also have objectives as well. So some of our objectives are, number one, to increase the academic performance and preparation for post-secondary education of participating students. Number two, to increase the rate of high school graduation and participation in post-secondary students. Also, number three, to increase educational expectations for participating students and increase student and family knowledge of post-secondary education options, preparation and financing. Also with those objectives, we also have goals that align with each objective as we do our activities and we do things for the community, take students on trips. All of those goals are aligned with each of the objectives that you see here before you.
So once again, who is a part of PA ISD, R2 GEAR Up? All current seventh and eighth graders at Abraham Lincoln and at Thomas Jefferson, basically the graduating class of 2028 and 2029 are a part of GEAR Up.
Some of the required activities as a part of our grant include rigorous academic curricula. Now, if you think about on last, this past summer, some of the curriculum that we brought forth, we had a bridge camp that we did this summer, the GEAR Up Summer Program, where we, we had the Algebra Mine Camp going on for any incoming seventh graders going into eighth grade that would be taking the Algebra One course. So that was a transition program for those eighth graders. And then also for the sixth graders going into seventh grade, we had the Rising Start Camp for those students that were a part of math to help them and increase their math skills. Some of the other things that we have as well is tutoring. We offer tutor.com, which is 24/7, seven days a week for all students and a part of the cohort. Also comprehensive mentoring. Comprehensive mentoring is things that, well, people that we get from either the community or companies that we hire to come into our campuses in order to mentor our students. We may also do things like where we'll have programs for our students so that we can teach them about leadership skills, study skills, and workshop skills as a part of that mentoring program. Also with financial aid, these are things that the students may learn as we go to the different colleges, or also we will get people to come in, like for our literacy nights, in order for them to discuss financial aid advising. The academic planning, career and counseling, those are things that me and my cohort do, me and my, not cohort, but my partner, that we do in the office, at the GEAR Up offices that we have at both campuses. Students can come in either in small groups or one-on-one in order to get academic planning and career counseling. Also, students of the cohort have access to behavioral health counseling. This is our MD Live piece that we are pushing out to our students as we speak. This allows for virtual- This allows for virtual counseling. So students, not only the students, but the student and their family members, so a parent, a mother, or father can join in with the virtual counseling. That virtual counseling piece can't take place at the office or it can take place at their home, whichever time they choose to make those appointments. And then also, as far as our required activities, we do offer professional development for all teachers as a part of our goals and requirement for the UT Gear Up.
And to add to that, the tutor.com and the MD Live is available all the way up to their first year in college. So class of 2028, they have access to MD Live tutor.com until 2029. And class of 2029 has access to those programs into 2030. To hear a few things, we're going to offer dual credit. We have the early college here already for those kids. We're trying to push them to take advanced placement classes. When they do get to high school, Nadella talked about the bridge and transition programs and the summer programs. We do help them with college admissions and advisory and mentoring, and we will be having the TSI for those A graders. Even though you do have those A graders who do get accepted to the Wilson Early College, those that do not, they still will have access, free of charge, for training, for TSI. Like she said, financial and economic literacy, family counseling engagement, financial education. We take several college visits. We took, what, three already this year? We've taken one on November the 18th to the HBCU Black College Expo. As they go on, we'll do job site visits, job shadowing, and internships, leadership service learning, and motivational programs, as we said earlier.
So the way that we pick our students to go on these trips, of course, they have to be a part of our cohort for the current seventh and eighth graders that we have now. But also, we would like to, so when we do our academic advising, one of the things that we asked our students are, are you a first graduate, a first-generation graduate for your family? And so that's one of the things that alert us to say, okay, hey, this is the student that probably needs to go on this particular field trip. Also, we do look at behavior, low academic performance, low-income families, and also the need for social engagement.
All right, Gear Up, the main thing about Gear Up is match, match, match. We have to meet match requirements. So basically, we have to match dollar for dollar with the school district. So donations, teacher time during non-contract hours. So let's say we go on a field trip, anytime after hours, then they could get, they could match the hours with us. All at mintime, mintime, we do anything with administration. Our space uses for our office, for our college career centers, technology uses, the laptops, the computers, our desktops, all that, it all helps us meet our match.
All right, so here is some highlights that we have from, starting from February 2023 until now for our Gear Up program. Let's see, will it, okay. Excuse the music, men, for probably a younger crowd.
Well, we're young, are we not?
You can't hear it. Okay, we'll just kind of get the pictures. It's not, it's short. Went to Prairie View. University of Houston, we also went to University of Houston again this year already for the Student of the Day program.
And attended a football game as well, and tailgate.
And to the NBA game?
Yeah, went to the NBA game in San Antonio, to San Antonio Spurs in March.
I guess it, well, it didn't finish. But we had a lot of activities that we've done so far. Like I mentioned, the summer camps, we've also visited Texas State University in San Marcos. We visited, like I said, Prairie View. We visited, am I missing any?
U of H.
U of H, yes. But a lot of different colleges, and as the students go to the colleges, they are learning about the requirements for college. So it's not just, oh, yay, fun and games. They do get to learn, like I said, about the financial responsibilities, learn about the campus itself. And then, you know, is this my college fit? That's one of the things that I like to mention to the students. You want to make sure you know what your college fit is because you may be from Port Arthur, Texas, which is, you know, kind of a rural, an urban area, but you may be thinking about, oh, I want to go to a college that's in a non-urban area. And you want to know, is this college the best college for me? So as we start taking the students to these colleges, we want to make sure that they know, hey, can I afford this? Hey, is this the type of environment that I would like to be in when we take our students to college, to the college business?
Thank you all for your time. Any questions?
Wait, that's not it.
Trustees, any questions?
I thought we were done. You did the TSI?
No, I wanted to say this, just to kind of bring some of the things that will be happening on this year with the board's approval. This is new for us. But one of the things that UT Gear Up would like to bring this year is they want the students to go on an overnight bus tour trip, where they will be visiting multiple colleges on the bus tour. Again, that was just, you know, that's something that they brought to us this year. And then also, this summer, they are asking that our eighth graders participate in the University of Texas Summer Camp, which is an overnight camp as well. And then also our seventh graders, not all of them, I see your face. Not all of them, but some of our seventh graders participate in the Texas A&amp;M University camp. The camps are usually anywhere from two to three days. So, and then, of course, they will have supervision with them, and then the coordinators will be with them as well. I guess they-
But we'll present that to you all on a later date.
So again-
So they really want them to go.
This is me and Ms. Barnes Jacobs. Any questions, comments?
Questions, trustees? Well, I'm going to say this, I have any questions, but y'all energy, y'all kept us up. And I can tell y'all love what y'all do.
Yes.
And one thing that grabbed me is, I think, in the presentation, where y'all followed them up to their freshman year in college. I think that's the most important because we lose a lot of kids in that area in that freshman year, and some of them say, you know, it's not for me, I can't make it. But by you pushing them and being there to guide them, I think that's going to help a lot of the kids out and put out there. Thank you.
Thank you all for having us.
And as you can see, board members, we have a lot going on in the district. And I will say this, if a student comes and want to learn or even meet us 20%, we will go the other 80% because we offer everything possible. And if there's something that we think of that will help students, we will offer that as well. So if they come here and they give us just a little bit of energy, then we'll take the rest. The last thing I will talk about with all of this happening, as you know, we definitely need employees. And as we discussed earlier, there is a need of employees, but I mean, and we're trying. We try, try hard to employ individuals to meet the needs of our students. Obviously, we want the best in Port Arthur. So even though someone applies, as we were speaking of earlier, doesn't mean that everyone that applies is going to be hired. So we want the best. And if we can't get the best, then we keep looking until we find the best. So, Mr. White, would you just give us an overview of where we are with personnel and vacancies and so forth?
Good evening, Dr. Porterie, President Barti, and members of the board. To meet, to meet our need to recruit and employ certified teachers and administrative, clerical, and auxiliary positions, the district participates in the following events. The Lamar University Teacher Job Fair, the Lamar Institute of Technology Job Fair, the Lamar State Port Author Job Fair. And as you know, for the last several years, we host our own job fair. Also, we post our jobs on Texas Workforce, the Texas Association of School Administrators, the Texas Association of School Boards, TASBO, Region Five, the school district's Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and LinkedIn accounts. Also, the last couple of years, we have partnered with Global Educational Concepts to recruit international teachers. And I'd like to add that for the first time in several years, all of our Spanish teaching positions are filled by fully certified teachers. Also, we utilize H1B visas to recruit math and science teachers. Last spring, we presented to the Board of Trustees the adjunct teacher position, which you approved, and we thank you for that. That program alone has significantly reduced the number of vacancies in our district. And again, I want to emphasize significantly reduced the number of vacancies. Also, we have the Grow Your Own program, where we utilize Esser Funds to help employees with bachelor's degrees who want to become certified teachers. Through the use of Esser Funds, it pays for their fees. Also, I'd like to add that Dr. Owens and the curriculum supervisors are providing an adjunct teacher academy, which assists teachers in developing lesson plans and delivery of instruction. The school district is also participating in the Teacher Incentive Allotment Program, which is going to provide our teachers an opportunity to earn additional funds. And just to give you an idea about those additional funds, there are three designations for teachers. There's master, exemplary, and recognized. And in order to qualify for these designations, it's based on teacher observations and student growth. Now, if you earn the designation of a master teacher, the minimum that you will earn is $12,000, not to exceed $32,000. If you earn the designation of, of, let's see, exemplary, thank you, Dr. Owens, the minimum that you can earn is $6,000, not to exceed $18,000. And if you earn the designation of recognized teacher, you will earn a minimum of $3,000, not to exceed $9,000. And the teachers who will be awarded these designations, the money will be issued to them this summer in a separate check. So as you can see, this is some big-time money that our teachers can earn in addition to their salaries and any stipends that they may be receiving. Also, the state of Texas employs about 372,000 teachers. And the most recent statistics that we have, there is a minimum of about 5,000 teaching vacancies in the state of Texas. In 2018, the attrition rate was about 9%. The last two years, it has increased to 12%. In 2018, about 7,500 teachers retired. The past couple of years, that percentage has increased to about 8,600 teachers. And according to an article released by the American Association of Colleges of Teacher Education, there has been a 35% decrease in enrollment in teacher education programs. And according to the Statistica Research Department, who published an article on October the 4th, 2023, that in August of 2023, about 51,000 teachers and other educational staff quit their jobs in the United States, 51,000. As you can see, there are teaching shortages across the United States. We will continue working diligently to recruit, employ, and retain certified and highly qualified teachers. Thank you.
President Barti, that concludes our staff reports.
Thank you, Dr. Porterie, thank you staff for your reports on tonight. Minutes, consider and if appropriate, approve minutes of the September 21st, 2023 Board of Trustee Meeting and amended minutes on the August 24th, 2023 Board of Trustee Meeting. Have a motion on the floor by trustee Ambrose, second by trustee Brown. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Consider agenda. The following items, which are of a routine and recurring nature, has been designated Consider Agenda items by the board president per policy BE Local. All of the items in the Consider Agenda will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a trustee, in which event the item or items will be withdrawn immediately from its individual consideration in its normal sequence after the items requesting separate discussion has been acted upon. Trustees, to give you minutes to look through Consider Agenda items. Let's call for a motion to approve Consider Agenda items number one through 13. Have a motion on the floor by trustee Ambrose, second by trustee Brown. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Personnel, Dr. Porterie.
Yes, board members, I have given you the list of two teachers for your approval.
Consider if appropriate, approve Department of Teachers. Have a motion on the floor by trustee Brown, and second by trustee Ambrose. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Also, I'm asking for consideration and if appropriate, approve proposed three-day suspension for term contract employee.
We have a motion on the floor by trustee Ambrose, second by trustee Brown. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, information, Dr. Porterie.
For September enrollment, 93.31 for the month of September, and 8,041 students.
Thank you. We call for adjournment of this meeting at 8:08 PM. Have a motion on the table by trustee Ambrose, second by trustee Brown. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Good night.